Tyler, are we ready to go? I didn't notice. I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, September 7, 2021. It is 6:30 PM or 18:30. City Clerk, if you do roll call, please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman. Councilmember Rednicki.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I request that PAC 47 come forward, please. All right, buddy up to there. Get around that thing. All right, and the rest of us, we could please rise, and if the PAC, if you would please lead us through the pledge.
[inaudible]. Time's up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, PAC 47. And that's only part of them. I guess they're a large group. So, thank you very much for coming on in tonight. All right, council, you had a chance to see the agenda. Are there any changes? Seeing no requests, it is approved. We'll move right into our comments. We'll start with our city manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, public. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here and point out the council's tentative calendar. We've made some changes here that are probably noteworthy. You can find this electronically on the city's webpage. Go to meetings, and you'll see an option there for the tentative calendar. And so, some of the changes I just want to highlight is, first of all, of course, we no change here per se, but just want to highlight the fact that here, this Saturday, we have the budget session here with city council and staff. That's here at the council chambers from 8:30 to 5:00. We do have a follow-up meeting. We typically put on September, in this particular case, September 28th, kind of follow up some of that budget discussion. Then, on the week of September 21st, we had originally canceled that week due to the Colorado Municipal League Conference. Typically, we cancel that week simply because the conference is out of town, and councils typically travel up to the mountains. That's where it's been. But this particular year, it's here locally, Westminster. So, in the interest of trying to take on some of these issues here for council, we've decided to hold the meeting on that Tuesday, the 21st. And so, you will see a first reading of the ordinance on short-term rentals. And I think, again, this is the first reading. We just simply put that ordinance on consent because we're just setting the public hearing. There is no public testimony that's taken at that point. Also, on September 21st, tentatively, I have the Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan as listed. The other two cities are looking to kind of manage that issue with their council. That's Inglewood and Sheridan. We are, as I've reported out to council before, the three cities are trying to work with Arapahoe County and trying to take the lead with a lot of this action plan. And so, we may move out that date beyond the 21st here, depending on some work here that the other two cities and the counties were pursuing here. So, it's shown as very tentative. Then, we're showing the meeting for October 5th. It's a regular meeting, and this is the specific meeting that we're having, the public hearing around the Aspen Grove proposal. You'll see that the time has changed to 5:30. We're anticipating a fairly large crowd for that, so we decided in the best interest for all of us is to go ahead and start that meeting at 5:30. Then, on October 12th, this originally was a study session, and we moved out the item of the ADA Transition Plan. For some of council, you'll remember this has been kind of on the calendar for a while. We've decided we're going to go ahead and push that out after the election and get the newly seated council to address that issue. And we're changing this to a special meeting so that we can address the public hearing for the short-term rental. So, if you remember, the short-term rental really is being managed in two ways according to our code. One is through the ULUC, and that reflects part of the conversation. The larger part of the conversation around short-term rentals is part of our licensing code. And so, it's a standalone, separate code amendment. And so, that'll be the purpose of October 12th. And again, we're trying to manage that particular conversation with this existing council here, since you've been trying to manage this issue here for at least the past year and a half. And that is kind of the major changes to the tentative calendar. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
We'll move on to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark has set me behind him. I feel like it's Thanksgiving dinner, and I'm at the smaller table with the other children. So...
And your mic is on, right?
Yes, it is. So, sorry, I've got a...
If you please speak into the mic, city attorney.
It's a directional mic.
And you wonder why we put you over there.
I know. So, yeah, I've got a little one at home who's not feeling well, so didn't want to spread any crud to anyone.
And you've been tested and all that good stuff, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's not COVID or anything like that. You know, my update is really kind of the continuing saga of TCHD. That's Tri-County Health Department. They represent Adams County, Arapahoe County, and Douglas County and provide all the public health orders. So, a couple weeks ago, Tri-County Health Department instituted an order requiring masks for those children ages 2 through 11 in school settings. That led to Douglas County opting out, and then subsequently, Adams County opted out because they were mad that TCHD allowed for counties to opt out. Arapahoe County was soliciting opinions on the mask order to decide whether or not they were going to opt out, but then Tri-County Health Department rescinded their order and instituted a new order, which required masks for all children in school settings. Prior to Arapahoe County having an ability to opt out or vote whether or not they wanted to opt out, tonight, or this afternoon, in a special meeting, Douglas County Commissioners convened and decided they were going to opt out of Tri-County Health. So, they are going to form their own health department. This is, they have 90 days in which they're going to appoint their five-member board. And Arapahoe County may actually sue Douglas County because it becomes an issue with funding and where those funds are going to go now. So, it's just kind of interesting as I kind of sit in the backseat and follow all this stuff, essentially regarding masks and the requirements. So, that's my report, just giving you an update. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. We'll go to council members. We'll start with Councilmember Grove.
Okay. I was one of the council members, there was many of us, I think everyone, that was in the Western Welcome Parade, and it was way fun. We had a little carriage or something, and it was just wonderful to see the citizens. Everybody did be able to come out after we weren't able to have it last year. And I have to say, the citizens were very welcoming to us as council members, and it was just wonderful to see everyone. So, think about it for next year. If you missed it, you know, so many times you go on vacation, you go, "Oh, I'm out of town, I can't attend." So, it starts the second weekend in August, and then the parade's usually the third weekend. Is that right? Do I have it right?
I think so.
Yeah. So, anyhow, thank you. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the Next Gen Group. They had their meeting last week. Couple things that they're working on. One is they're real interested in getting involved in homelessness. They read the report. They want to see what they can do to volunteer for that or to volunteer to work with homeless people. We did have a gentleman who was homeless who came and spoke during public comment, so that kind of helped them get them some perspective. A while ago, city council had asked the Next Gen Group if they would come up with a proposal on what could make Littleton fun. They wanted to expand it on what will make Littleton attractive to people of their generation. So, they are still working on that. They're coming up with ideas, but they don't have anything yet to present to council. But I just wanted to let you know that they were working on it. The other thing they want to work on is a proposal that they'll present to staff here, hopefully pretty quickly, on a get-out-to-vote campaign. They really want to make sure that people of their age group, and for those that don't know, the Next Gen Group is 16 to 36. They really want to get their...
And Next Gen is generation, of course.
Next generation, yes. I'm using abbreviation. They want to work on getting their peers to vote. They're not advocating for any candidate or any issue. They just want to get their peers out to vote. So, hopefully, staff will see that here towards the end of the month, and it will be something where they go to some event maybe and just talk about who they are and the importance of voting. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Fay.
I want to give a big, big thank you to the Public Works Department for two different things. Several citizens have commented to me that they are really happy with the rebuilding of the bridge on Gallup Street. It turned out nice and smooth and pretty in that you don't even notice that it's there. So, that was very well done. The other thing is, I want to thank in particular Keith Reister and Kelsey Stanfield for getting South Suburban Parks and Rec to mow the weeds along High Line Canal Trail in a particular place. There was one citizen who was so very, very upset about that. And it took a lot of work on the part of all three of us, but by golly, we got those weeds mowed, and the citizen is very happy. That's all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Driscoll.
In the future, I'll be happy to do that mowing. No report.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind.
Councilmember Rednicki.
There'll be a joint meeting between the Arts and Culture Commission and the Fine Arts Commission this coming Thursday, September 9th. I'll be attending that, being the liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission. Secondly, just to correct Pam, Councilperson Grove, it was a wagon that we were on at the Western Welcome Week, pulled by two Belgians, the horse variety, and wasn't sure at the beginning whether we were going to have accolades or eggs thrown at us, but...
Well, there were some that wanted to share tomatoes with us.
Oh, okay. But it was a great time, well organized, and we had a lot of fun.
That it? Great, thank you. Mayor Protem.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All righty. Alls I have tonight is that we, council did have a meeting with South Suburban Parks and Rec, was, gee, two weeks ago, maybe? And it was very productive. I think we expressed our need for maybe a little bit more attention in certain parts of our city. So, I think it was a well-attended meeting, and I appreciate South Suburban spending the time with us to do that. And with that, we will move into our citizen appearances. And tonight, we have ours, our special guest, we have Cub Scout PAC 47. Do you have something that we're going to present to us, talk to us? If you will, please, come on up. And if you will, pull the mic down. They're directional mics, so you've got to speak right into them.
One question about you. Why does every person I... When I came up there, I saw a bunch of people had candy. And I would like to know why.
It's our CD clerk's fault. She distributes candy thinking it'll win us over and make us a little sweeter.
Okay.
All right, thank you for the question.
I don't really have a question.
You have a dog?
Yeah.
What kind of dog?
Goon Retriever.
Ah, nice, nice. What's its name?
Nala.
Nala, ah, great name. All right, well, say hi to Nala from the city council.
I don't, I don't really have a question either.
All right. Well, what grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade? Wow, cool. All right. Were you looking around like someone else is going to correct you? Is it, you're on fifth grade, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, well, good. Well, I hope you get off to a good start and it continues the rest of the year. Thanks for coming in.
My question is, do you have a favorite car?
The one that starts up always is my favorite car. You know, in my days, I've been through cars that didn't always do that, so it's, probably don't understand that comment, but a couple of you will here.
When I get older, how can I become a council member or a mayor?
Learn to read. Got to learn to read, got to learn to comprehend what you read, understand numbers, and just pay attention to what's going on in your community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to buy popcorn from PAC 47?
Do I want a, what is it, a popcorn?
Yeah.
Buy popcorn. Sure, catch us after the meeting, but you've got to stay to the very end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Come on up there.
They happen to have a truck outside for popcorn.
Here, we're going to pass this along. There's seven pieces. So, pass that out. Thank you. All right, oh, thank you.
So, I have one question.
All right.
So, thank you for having us here tonight. I know the scouts are honored to be here. What is one or two important issues that you are currently facing in our Littleton community?
Well, a couple things right now, and I'll take this one first, is that we're working on our budget. In fact, this Saturday, we have an all-day meeting where we'll be discussing the budget that's being proposed by our city manager. City staff has been working on it for months on the budget. And as you can imagine, with this past year, with the government shutdown and all that stuff, it's been challenging for not just businesses and other enterprises, but also for governments across the board. So, that's our biggest one. Mayor Protem?
Oh, jeez, where to start, right? We are working on a comprehensive update of our land use and zoning code, and that'll come before council for a vote in October. It's been about a generation in coming. It touches on any number of important things in the city. So, that is, I think, at the top of the list of issues that the city council is dealing with.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure, right in that mic.
Being that we are an organization that helps the community, we have to carry out various community service projects, as well as we have some older scouts in the families that do Eagle projects for the community, what is an event that you have that you guys would like to see more troops and scouts to be a part of?
City manager.
I would be more than happy to help you with that. We have staff that, you know, we look for kind of what we call local partnerships, and so I think if your troop here would like to participate in some of our activities, we'd love to have you. Kelly Nardis, our Communications and Cultural Events Director, so she can certainly connect with you. I'd give you my card, but I ran out of cards here last week. But otherwise, you can just call my office at 795-3720, and I'd be happy to hook you up.
And you can get that number again when you go back and watch this meeting online, and you can see yourselves online, on TV. All right. Well, thank you very much, PAC 47, for coming in. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move down into our public comments, and the time now is 6:49 PM, so I'm going to, I open the public comments at 6:49 PM. Councilmember Rednicki.
Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The city council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the city manager and city attorney for immediate comment after public comment to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please remember to state your name and address or council district for the record. And finally, most importantly, please speak directly into the microphone.
Great. Thank you very much. First up, we'll have Frank Atwood, followed by Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, city council. I'm Frank Atwood from District 4. I invite you to join us in a remembrance ceremony for Jerry Hill on Tuesday, September 21st. Thanks to generous donation and pledges of his many friends, we will be remembering Jerry Hill and dedicating a tree on the Geneva Village grounds in his honor at 5:45, Tuesday, September 21st, two weeks from today, on what would have been his 85th birthday. The public is invited to attend and share memories and join us for dinner after council's meeting at Black Eyed Pea 5180 South Broadway. The memorial tree is a 30-foot little leaf linden tree with tag number 78, located just east of his former Geneva Village apartment and south of the clock tower. Parking will be available at City Hall. The ceremony is scheduled at 5:45 to remember Jerry being punctually early for city council meetings. The dedication includes a plaque that will say, "Jerry Hill, 1936 to 2021, with appreciation for your persistent, dedicated service to our town. Friend, you are missed." If you have any questions, please feel free to call me at 720-260-1493. Hope that, again, the public's invited, and we're eager to hear comments and remembrances of Jerry Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you for remembering Jerry Hill. All right, we have Pam Chadbourne, and no one else is on our list. If you still want, if you would like to speak before on public comment and you're not on the list, you will have an opportunity. Hello?
Hi, I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here, and I've got concerns about the city's process. I'm going to talk about a couple items on the agenda. And one of them I'll mention about Aspen Grove is that it was missing from the development activity list for over three months. And I'm sorry, but that's how citizens find development projects. I'm not sorry, let me clarify. That's how citizens learn about projects. That's why the city spent the money to set it up. During the Grove abomination and violation of our city process and code, for three months in the summer, the Grove did not appear on our DAL. And now, again, Aspen Grove, not on the DAL for three months. At the least, this raises questions in my mind. When staff posts something, and I'm going to tell you this is standard of practice in IT. When you post something in a group setting and you know someone else receives it, it's your job to go online and check what you posted, does it show up as it should, and is it the right version? This is standard of practice. Now, for three months, our staff did not go and look at the public D A O, or if they did, they didn't care that Aspen Grove was not there. This is a proposal to add 2,500 apartments, and it is a major impact on the city. How is it that our staff does not check the D A O for over three months and correct that? It may be a software issue, a geo-tracking thing didn't link. That is irrelevant to the checking process that our staff should carry out. So, this is not the first time that our website has not reflected something that it should or reflects something odd. And so, this practice should be... So, this practice should be implemented by our city. It is standard of practice in technical organizations where there is a team, and you're handing your product to the next user. We, the people, are an important user, and the city should verify that what we get is accurate, correct, and there. Second of all, I'm disturbed about the noise ordinance, and that's because it's presented as just noise. And you know what? Really, it changes the character of downtown Littleton. Greg Runke, in public, for years, has said, "I really want a party district. We need loud bands down here to wake it up." But you know what? That's not the character of the community that we have. And theoretically, we're doing all you see to maintain character. This is not about noise. It is about changing the character of downtown, and poorly so, because it's a residential district that shouldn't be submitted to eighty decibels of noise for ten hours on two days a week. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. It is six fifty-six. City manager or city attorney, anything you would like to add?
Just a couple of quick comments. Appreciate Mr. Atwood's attention to Jerry Hill. I think we all knew Jerry pretty well and miss the guy. So I think it's wonderful the community's having the memorial for Jerry. Ms. Chadbourne's comments about Aspen Grove and the development activity list, I have no reason to doubt her. I'm not aware of a problem that existed with that. That is not our legal notice for our public on any quasi-judicial matter of that magnitude. It's pretty well set how we're supposed to be doing that through the advertisement and posting of the property. Appreciate the fact that people like it and lean on it, and be happy to kind of look to make sure that we're doing what we can, keep those systems in place. And if you'll remember, when I got here, we didn't even have G I S. So we've been trying to put forward here, systems here, to kind of improve the access of our information. And the development activity list is one of those new pieces, so if there is an issue, be happy to look into that. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Do you think, city attorney? Great, thank you very much. Alright, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Councilmember Fay, if you could please introduce the consent items.
Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by the title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance on first reading approving the Fourth Amendment to the Newton Property General Plan Development Plan, President's Aspen Grove. Ordinance seventeen dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance on first reading amending the Noise Control Ordinance, Title VII, Chapter Three, Sections Three and Six of the Littleton City Code, pertaining to standards and maximum permissible continuous sound pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District.
Pull. It has been pulled?
C. ID twenty-one dash one nine two, motion to approve minutes of the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting and the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting.
Great. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A and C.
Okay, second. We have a motion and second, Councilmember Driscoll. Okay, we'll get to this. Alright. It did pop up, right? Alright, Councilmember Grove. There we go, cool.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We had ID number twenty-one dash, I'm sorry, seventeen dash twenty-twenty-one pulled by Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, I just wanted to get some clarity, Mark. When I read through this and looked at the actual ordinance, on page four, they talk about the decibel levels, Monday, Wednesday, Sunday. I think they forgot to add Tuesday in there. But more importantly, Thursday through Saturday, we are saying eighty decibels from twelve to ten P M. Has that been changed? I thought it was, or has that always been, is that what we decided at study session?
I think I can field this.
Yep.
When we did the study session, one of the recommendations that staff had is that we did not need the Thursday anymore. So, the change from our, I guess, our temporary ordinance, which was due to expire coming up here this October, was just to have those increased decibel levels apply to Fridays and Saturdays only. So, the temporary ordinance that we had in place was Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and now it's just Friday and Saturday nights.
So am I reading this incorrectly then, on page four of the ordinance? It's highlighted?
On page four of the ordinance, that chart?
Yeah, Thursday through Saturday.
We have Monday through Thursday, and Sunday is seven A M. to seven P M. With sixty decibels from seven A M. to seven P M. Seven P M. to seven A M. is fifty-five decibels. And Friday through Saturday, or Friday and Saturday, we have twelve P M. to ten P M. At eighty decibels, and ten P M. to twelve P M. at fifty-five decibels.
Perhaps I'm looking at the wrong ordinance.
Are you looking at one that says Thursday through Saturday?
So, in the, in the packet, we had attached both the new revised ordinance, as well as the one that council had actually already passed.
There you go.
Perhaps you're looking at the one that's currently in effect.
Oh, there we go. There we go. The second item there, okay, got it.
So, one last question, so sorry about that, looking at the old ordinance. Mark, you know, we had some conversation with a couple of the businesses downtown regarding Thursday. Is anything resolved with that?
We are in the process now of working with our business chamber and hoodlum, looking for public input. That's, in fact, Jennifer Henninger, our community development director, she's stepping forward. I'm sure she could talk about this a little bit. But yes, we have talked to a few businesses who may have a little bit different opinion about maybe eliminating Thursday in particular. So, we're in the process of encouraging them to attend the public hearing. But Jennifer?
Okay, sorry. That is correct, Mark.
And you are?
Sorry. Jennifer Henninger, Community Development Director. So, we reached out to hoodlum. We also put a news article in the Littleton Report online and reached out to specific businesses. We have heard back from Grand Central. There, there was confusion as to if this was a ban on live music. So, it is not a ban on live music. It was just certain particular days, an increase in the decibel levels for those days. So, we have heard from some other businesses that do feel differently about the Thursdays. So we will bring that to you at the public hearing.
Thank you. And with this, would they be able to request a special, a special permit like they do on other events? Or does that kind of defeat the purpose of the ordinance? If they keep asking for a special permit for every Thursday?
Correct. So they could apply for an amplified sound permit that would allow them to go over. But with the new ordinance, how far they could go over would be different than, than is in place right now.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I think too, helping people understand the intent of the ordinance is also important here, clearly. Noise is kind of an interesting thing to try to measure, especially since it's directional. And I think some of the businesses probably could meet the, the original existing ordinance, depending on how they position kind of their music or sound. And so I think that's part of the conversation that we're having with people, certainly I did. But in the end, we're trying to help people understand, you know, the logistics of this particular change. And so, again, we'll bring all that information to you at the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Anything else, counsel? Counsel, if we're gonna advance this, it does need a motion. Or it just dies.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item B. Ordinance on first reading, amending the Noise Control Ordinance, Title VII, Chapter Three, Sections Three and Six of the Littleton City Code pertaining to standards and maximum permissible continuous sound pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Fay. Alright, counsel, any other discussion? If not, ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor, with Councilmember Driscoll voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, we move down to general business. We have ID number twenty-one dash one ninety-seven, twenty twenty Audit Report and Comprehensive Annual Financial Presentation of the CAFR. And I will turn it over to the city manager. Oh, wait, oh, hang on a second, counsel. We do have, there is no action by council tonight, I'm sorry. So there's no action, so this is just for informational only. Alright, so with that, city manager.
Alright, thank you, mayor. Counsel? You know, one of the most, perhaps one of the most important responsibilities of any city council is making sure that the administration of an organization, certainly the city, is that we're doing everything in our power here to make sure that we have a financial system, a budgeting system here that meets state law, certain minimums. And this is a very important responsibility to our community. We all know that. I think this is an opportunity here this evening to kind of share the results of that kind of annual report and the work that we've been doing this past year. Certainly under the conditions, I have to hand it to Tiffany and her staff, you know, putting together, kind of managing a budget, and the accounting this past year was quite a challenge, not to mention what we're currently in. So we got two rough years. But we do have a report here, and with that, I'm gonna let Tiffany make some introductions here. But Tiffany Hooton, our finance director.
Thank you, Mark. Good, good evening, counsel. Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. This evening, we're gonna be sharing some results from the annual audit that we just concluded in late July, early August. And just a few comments before I hand it over to our auditor. As Mark mentioned, this is one of the most important documents and processes that we go through and for the city, as well as the finance department and every department in the organization. It's very important, it's required. If we didn't have it, there could be some serious repercussions. I am happy to present the results this evening to counsel. And it's a group effort, it's a team effort. I want to thank the staff of finance, the entire organization, council. We all have a part of this process, whether we think we do or not, and it's a very important process. And I did also want to mention there were some changes over the past year as to what we refer this document as. In the past, we've referred to it as a C A F R. And we have been asked that we no longer use that term, and so rather we refer to it as the annual report. Or there is a proposal by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to potentially use it as an A C F R, or Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, going forward. So just wanted to kind of mention that. I know.
We just got used to CAFR.
I know. I think I just looked it up. I think it's been in place since like nineteen seventy-nine, nineteen seventy-seven, so it's a very hard change.
So we're on schedule for Littleton, then?
Well, relatively, yes. But yes, I just want to thank everyone for all their efforts related to the audit. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Paul Niedermuller, who is with Clifton Larson Allen, and he's gonna be sharing some of the results of the audit this past year.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of city council. For the record, Paul Niedermuller with Clifton Larson Allen. And tonight, I come to kind of give you the culmination of all the hard work that's been put forth by the finance team, as well as your governance and support of the financial stewardship over the city's finances. As you know, we started this process back in December of twenty twenty, if you can believe, and going through the internal controls and the items that were given to us by the city management. And tonight, we're gonna share kind of the process with you, and also the results of our, of our audit dated July twenty-seventh. So in your packet, the first item is the governance letter, and what we would call this is the Cliff Note version of what happened and transpired during the audit process. Clearly, we work very closely with finance throughout the audit process, but we work for the citizens, and specifically for the governance and the city council in that respect. So any changes within the financial statements would be delineated within this report. And we're happy to show on page one, there's no significant audit findings or significant changes in your accounting policies or procedures as a result from, from this year to last year. I think that's very important because of your stewardship over that. Accounting is not a perfect science. We delineate a few and identify three estimates that go within the financial statement report. And then we further discuss any significant disclosures that we think could be relevant to your reading, as well as the public's reading of the financial statements. On the disclosures, we have nothing to bring to your attention, as, as is noted in our letter. Finally, if we had any disagreements or difficulties in performing the audit, we would be required to present this within this financial document, and we're happy to report we did not have any difficulties or encountered during concluding our audit process. So on the second item, it is noted in our, our language as Yellow Book, and I realize we're using a lot of acronyms, and we're trying to get clear what that means. And this audit was conducted under governmental auditing standards, which is unique for the city of Littleton, and I'll explain why. The city of Littleton received greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds during the calendar year ended twenty twenty, namely the monies that were receipted from Jefferson County and Arapahoe County related to the coronavirus relief funds. Because you received those dollars, we were required to do a more scrutiny, a further scrutiny of those funds to make sure that they complied with the federal guidelines as, as directed by the Office of Management and Budget. Just from a perspective, you re, you expended, expended seven hundred, excuse me, four point seven million dollars of federal funds, and that is all highlighted on page one hundred and twenty-seven of the annual financial report. Of that amount, four point four million was related to the coronavirus relief funds that were receipted during the year twenty twenty. We get three, three pieces of documentation within the report. Notice our opinion, that's listed on pages ten through twelve. Just wanted to highlight that this report is prepared by management, and our job is to audit it in all material respects, so that we go about our, our process and evaluate the transactions, making sure that all of the information that we received is in accordance with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, as well as generally accepted accounting practices. Our opinion ranges from pages twenty-two to sixty-one. As you, as you see from a numbering standpoint, this document includes pages one to one hundred and thirty-five. So there's several information within this financial report that is provided to the citizens and provided to give a different perspective, but not necessarily audited as part of our engagement with the city council. And finally, on the financial statements themselves, start on page twenty-two, and prior to proceeding to that is a management discussion analysis. And if you ever wanted to know what was happening within the city, and really comparison and kind of some future-looking statements, you would look at that management discussion analysis. And for the public, this is listed on pages thirteen to twenty-one of the current report. So we get ten pages of financial statements. It takes us thirty pages or counsel, or, excuse me, financial management to describe the accounting of all the transactions, how those are accounted for in more detail. And these are considered the financial statement footnotes that are listed on pages thirty-six to sixty-one. The final document that I'd like to briefly walk through is, is because you're required to have that single audit, that federal funds audit, we were required to put any findings or recommendations that rose to the level that was required by the auditing standards to bring to your attention, as counsel. As noted on the back report, and specifically on page one hundred and thirty-three, we did not bring any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, as a result of the financial report itself, or as, as a result of our work over the federal funds that we just discussed, and specifically, the coronavirus relief funds that was tested as a major program for the year ended twenty twenty. So that is very good news, not only for the city finance, as well as, as city council and the citizens being good stewards of those federal dollars and meeting the requirements of the Office of Management and Budget. At this point, I stand for any questions that you may have as your auditor, or any other items that you think would be relevant for this discussion on the financial statements as presented.
Great, well, thank you very much, Paul, for what you, your firm does for us. And I know Littleton has a requirement that we change auditors from time to time, so what year are you on? what year are you on?
This is year three of a five-year engagement.
Great. All right, thank you. And I think that's important for citizens to know, too, that, so thank you very much. We appreciate everything you're doing. And again, council's heard me say this many times, and I know since our director, back to her days as the assistant director, that's when, I think, Littleton, prior to that, was having some issues. And I think since the time that Tiffany has been on board with us, as well as with Doug Farmer, who was the director at that time, you guys have really turned things around. So I appreciate everything that you've been able to do for that department. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Grove?
I have a question about the general fund.
Is your mic on?
I have a question about a general fund. On page three, it said one thing, and then further down, it said something else. If you could just kind of clear that up, it's a lot of facts and figures, it was a little unclear on if there was a deficit, where the money was going and how it was going.
Right, and the question that you're referring to is, there's a question on page three versus page 18, and page three references the 2021 budget, and I think it was page three. And it's noted as a deficit of 656,000, I think that's the question you're referring to. Yeah. So page three references the 2021 budget, and so what that means is, when we prepared our 2021 budget, we had anticipated that revenues would be less than expenditures, and so that's why you're seeing that 656,000 deficit. It's just informational. The document that we're talking about this evening in particular is related to 2020, and so I think it's just a difference of what year you might be looking at.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? I see no more.
All right, I thank you, and have a great evening.
Great, well, thank you very much, Paul. Thank you again for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Cool. City manager, do you have anything you want to follow up with that on?
No, mayor, I think that's it. Again, I just want to thank Tiffany Hooton and her staff, and all the department directors who participated in that, and certainly Paul's firm. It is a lot of work every single year, and, you know, I'm thrilled with Tiffany's work around the federal funds. We're hoping that, quite honestly, we get a lot more of those in the future. Hopefully, our ballot issue as well here passes, is considered here this fall, and I think that she's positioned well here to kind of manage a lot of that federal funds here for the future. So that's it, mayor.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number nine on our agenda, ordinances on second reading and public hearing. We have one item tonight, and that is ordinance number 16-2021, an ordinance on second reading amending the Littleton City Code Title X, Chapter 12, Amendment Procedure Regarding City Initiated Comprehensive Resoning Process. Counsel, we will receive a presentation from staff on this ordinance, and then after council discussion, we will have a vote to either approve or not approve the proposed ordinance. So we do have an action following the discussion. With that, I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, mayor, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heniger, who's going to be giving the presentation, but certainly I'll be available for chiming in.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, Jennifer Heniger, Community Development Director. I got to write that time. So we're here, okay, there we go. We skipped a couple of slides. So we're here this evening to discuss an ordinance before you regarding city-initiated or comprehensive rezoning. So what I want to do this evening is take you through how we currently handle rezonings. Again, they're mainly for one parcel at a time, the process, and go through what we are proposing, and then give you some data associated with mailing and posting. So first off, our current rezoning requirements. It is a quasi-judicial action, so it is in the form of an ordinance, and it is heard in the case, like you're acting as a judge and jury. We do post the property, so that posting is a metal sign that the applicant picks up and posts in the property. We do require the creation of a legal description, so that does require a licensed surveyor to provide that legal description. We also provide a mailed notice for properties within 700 feet of the parcel that is being rezoned. And we also post in the paper 10 days prior, and we do that in conjunction with the city clerk's office, and they also post in locations, Colleen, you post that here at the city, that's our...
Posted at the city center, the courthouse, and the museum, or the library, I apologize.
Excellent, thank you. So what is being proposed is something that would only apply to city-initiated comprehensive rezonings, so that is something that city council would have to enact. Basically, the city council would say, "Staff, we are interested in rezoning these properties." We've put on the ordinance that this would only apply to 50 parcels or more, so if you take the average-sized parcel here in Littleton of 7,000 square feet, you're talking about eight acres in size that we would be looking at. We're proposing to handle it as a legislative action, and the legislative action would just have posting in the newspaper, and then posting in the locations that Colleen just mentioned. So it would remove the requirement of sending a mailed notice or of posting all of the So again, that proposed notification, so the council notice would stay the same for legislative item, which is posting at the locations that are mentioned, as well as in the newspaper. And then the planning commission notice, we would follow that process of the newspaper notice, and we have operating standards that would outline how that newspaper notice is done, and then it would be noticed a minimum of 10 calendar days prior to the actual hearing. In terms of the proposed description, if you remember our process right now, we do require a legal description in an effort to not get legal descriptions for all the parcels involved in the city-initiated rezoning. We would go with an area, basically an area description, similar to what we've done for the Main Street Historic District, and the Historic District item that'll be coming to you, as well as the noise ordinance, we would use an area description for the description of the posting. Additional notice provisions that we are suggesting is that there will be a clause in there of the Director of Community Development's discretion that additional notice will be posted, and that would be done as a form of courtesy. We would also publish anything that we do associated with this. Again, we do not anticipate using this very often. Would be published in the Littleton Report in the printed and online versions, as it has been done actually for the last 18 months on the ULUC. So just a little bit of data for this decision before you. So right now, the city of Littleton has 15,867 parcels, and this we know because of the great GIS that we have stood up here since Mark came on board. What that amounts to is 14,000 unique mailing addresses, so we would have 14,000 notices. So, and just on the traditional rezoning cost associated with that, it's 55 cents per notice mailed. Surveyor costs, the city does not have a city surveyor, so we'd be using private, so that's $1,000 plus for a legal description. $250 is what we collect for each sign posted, and then our applicant typically gets $100 of that back. Staff time to create an envelope and process the notice, and then $25 to post in the paper. When we brought this as a study session item, we did have some questions about what do other jurisdictions do? So we took a look at Cassaroc, Centennial, Inglewood, and Re Ridge, and you can see our findings there. In terms of how it's handled, we did find legislative, as well as traditional, that quasi-judicial process. Planning Commission was always involved in the recommendation of the city-initiated rezoning, and then where we saw some differences was in the notice required, that two of the jurisdictions did require mailing. All of them did require a newspaper notice. So what staff is proposing is what we proposed to Planning Commission, and they did support it unanimously. And we recommend that council approve our recommendation, and that is that we make the notification process efficient and effective. As you can see from the number of parcels, the impracticality of doing a regular noticing and posting of all 15,000 parcels is not practical. What we're also recommending aligns with other jurisdictions, and is part of best practices put out in planning, in the planning world. And we do anticipate that we will really use this provision, and it is really needed for large-scale reform of our zoning code. And again, I think one other thing that I would like to stress is that the Unified Land Use Code that we're bringing before you, as well as the official zoning map, 95% of the city, it's a renaming. So with that, we feel like we have, I feel like we have notified the public through the Littleton Report online, also through our Envision Studios. This is part of a multi-year process. We've been involved with the ULUC specifically for the last 18 months, and have had notices in the paper associated with it. So with that, that concludes staff comments. Reed or Mark, do you have anything else to add?
All right, council, do we have any questions before we move into the public hearing?
Sure. Jennifer, so we have a better idea. If we did that mailing, you kind of laid it out there, some pricing, but what would an average mailing cost?
The mailing itself, we're looking at about $8,000.
Yeah.
Staff, time, and capacity to do 14,000 mailings is truly the impractical part.
So I got a little confused there. Earlier, you said it was within a 700-foot radius of the property, so why are we mailing to the entire city?
So in the case before you, and why we're doing this city-initiated rezoning request is that we will have a new official zoning map, which in reality rezones or creates new zone districts for the entire city. So we would technically be notifying the entire city that this is happening, so those are the 14,000 unique mailing addresses. I honestly, I didn't even do a calculation of what 700 feet outside of the city boundaries would necessitate.
Gotcha, okay. It was outside, okay, it's outside the city boundary.
Correct, so that's for a traditional rezoning. The process requires notification of property owners within 700 feet.
So for example, Columbine Square on Bellevue and Federal, because Inglewood is across the street, you would still email to Inglewood?
Correct.
Okay, good.
You know, and I would just add, Councilmember Driscoll, that I think, you know, in terms of the mailings, that's one thing, I think, and staff time, it's the posting, the physical postings on individual properties, which I think is also part of this equation, which isn't reflected in the cost associated with it. So typically, for a parcel that's being rezoned, we put up those big, you know, notices, public notices for a rezone or some sort of action happening. That would technically still be a requirement under our code. If we don't pass this kind of a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning, we would be required to post individual properties.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Nicky?
Jennifer, the 50 parcel cutoff, where did that come from? Why was it more, why wasn't it less, why 50?
Reed, would you like to answer that?
To toss a coin?
I've set up before that I made up the number. There was some sort of reasoning behind it. I will tell you that generally speaking, most jurisdictions that have a city-initiated comprehensive rezoning property, excuse me, policy, have a kind of a lower threshold in terms of when they can do that. I think I had mentioned before that Commerce City, I think it's, if it's more than two, that the city can go ahead and do it, which, to me, I've speculated that's akin to spot zoning, which is illegal, which they should fix their ordinance. Other jurisdictions have differing levels. I think Lone Tree might have been the one that had the highest, which was 40. We're going 50. So in terms of the reasoning behind 50, if you take a general lot within the city of Littleton and measure it out at approximately 7,000 square feet, 6,500 square feet is probably a typical lot in the city of Littleton, 50 of those would amount to about 80 acres. So there was some math behind it, but that's a pretty large amount of space, and so that's why when we say we don't think we'll ever have to do this again, I mean, we don't have green space within the city of Littleton to actually use that sort of threshold again, I don't believe, so.
Other, just one other comment. You mentioned postings of courtesy or publishing as a courtesy. Perhaps you might consider large, some of the large notices at major intersections, for instance. Obviously, you can't do it every block in all whatever, 3,000 blocks in Littleton, but perhaps, you know, 10 or 15, 20 or so on the major intersections would be another way of informing the public. Just a thought.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, council? If none, I will open the public hearing. It is 7:31. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Also, if you will give us your name, your address, your district. Right now, we have one person on the signup list, and if you're not on the signup list, you also will have an opportunity after those on the list. First up, we have Pam Chadbourne.
I'm Pam Chadbourne, over a block and a half from here, and as I've said before, the waiving of the requirement to mail notices to, you know, these addresses, to me, is wrong. I didn't bring my displays tonight, but there were two funding fixed mailings to pretty much owners or properties in the city, and that didn't cost nothing. I do not understand why there is extra burdensome staff time associated with this. Some kind of notice similar to that could be prepared without great cost. But on some level, I'm just really appalled by the desire not to notify people that this is happening. It's already changed downtown. Look around and see the change. People care about downtown. Of course, they should be notified that changes can be happening in other areas of the city than their own, and of course, they should be aware that changes could happen in their area, or the corridor that they drive on, or the bus takes to get them back and forth to their homes. Putting residences, four, or five, six, how many-story residences on corridors is a huge change for a community. It was intentionally not done by Littleton because people shouldn't have to live near traffic. You've got your kids and your dogs. I was a little girl who toddled down Broadway, and that was when it had a lot less traffic. One of the 29 homes that's on Broadway now. Putting hundreds, thousands of apartments on corridors, to me, is wrong. People deserve to know about this, and honestly, the attempts that were made by the city to notify people up to now, the seminars and stuff, those were small. We were promised that Ken &amp; Keith was going to go out and meet people where they were. Where were the meetings with the manufactured homes communities? Where were the meetings with the folks around East Elementary, which the city told LPS would be closed because it would be redeveloped? This whole thing is being conducted outrageously, and the least you could do is send notices to people. And the least you could do is send notices to people. And let me just mention, the property values that are going to change because of this ULUC are huge, millions and millions of dollars. And you don't want to spend money to send notices to 14,000 homes? It is wrong. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. That is it for everyone on our list. Is there anyone else we'd like to speak? Seeing none, it is 7:35. First, I will go over to city manager or city attorney.
No comments from city manager, and lots of questions, but I don't have anything to add at this point.
Great. Thank you.
No comments, but again, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, who wants to lead off? I guess I will. So refresh for me again, I think you did talk a little bit about it. What is the cost to send out? If we were to do a change of some sort, what, give me just an estimate, what that would cost the city to do, end time?
So postage would be about $8,000 on that. Printing the actual, we probably would do a postcard. So printing the postcard, we could do in-house. Staff time-wise, we would, at this point, probably have to have a minute man do it for us. So that would be a cost. I'm not sure what that cost would be.
City manager?
Mr. Mayor, I think the cost, in my opinion, is not so much the issue. I think it's the notification to, you know, 13,000-plus, where the actual change is in name only. And so what is the message? I see that as being ineffective. So there really is no change. They get to do everything the current zoning is really talking about, but the name changes. And so I think, in my opinion, there's little value in making that notification for the vast majority. If there's anything, it's the mixed use, which is roughly...
551 parcels.
Roughly 500. The ordinance as proposed allows the Community Development Director, you know, to use discretion in making additional notification. You know, mailing it to them, I could see perhaps some value there. But again, you know, we've gone through 18 months of a lot of notification, a lot of conversation with people around all this. If the council feels more comfortable for us to make notifications, say, on the mixed use, be more than happy to do it. But I would, my opinion, for whatever it's worth, the balance of 13,500-plus, I would question whether or not there's any value at all there.
And with the comprehensive plan being passed just over a year ago, or thereabouts, have we had to advertise for changes so far?
Well, clearly, we've done a lot of notification around the vision, the comp plan, we've been working on for three years, and we've done lots of mailing. So again, I would suggest the cost of mailing isn't so much the issue at all. It's what is the value you hope to get out of that? And certainly, with the visioning conversation and the comp plan, we were looking for as much engagement as we possibly could gain. Again, we haven't updated the comp plan in 40 years. Here, this is a legislative rezoning process. Clearly, we'd be using it for the ULUC. Beyond that, you know, very, very seldom ever. And certainly, in my tenure, we've never had to look at it, other than this one particular case. There had been a conversation around the Enser property, quite honestly, that was at one time maybe legislative. That was, you know, three or four years ago. So could it be used? Well, of course. And I think that's the challenge for the council this evening, is looking at it in two different ways. One is the 50 parcel threshold, and the other perhaps is the application with the ULUC.
And then what's a general amount that maybe a citizen would have to pay if they need to notify someone that they were requesting a rezoning?
Well, there, the legal description, again, you know, it's $1,000 per parcel. By the way, that's another wrinkle in this whole thing. So, you know, if we follow the letter of the law strictly on the current ordinance, are we going to do a legal description for 14,000 parcels? Of course not. I mean, that's completely impractical. So I think that's why an ordinance of this magnitude is common. It's a way for us to kind of manage this a little more reasonably.
So it really boils down to the difference between, say, the city and a citizen doing it, is that we would, we, the city, would have to notify thousands, whereas a resident would only have to maybe four or five, maybe, at most?
Yeah. I mean, I can tell you, the recent Aspen Grove notification, I think we sent out 150.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Counsel, anyone? Councilmember Renicki, your microphone, of course.
Clearly, the process is unwieldy, as is currently. $1,000 for creating a legal description per parcel, preposterous. You would think that 40 years ago, when Carter was president and our zoning code was created, what do they think? It was going to last forever? Maybe they should have come up with a legislative process for eventually changing the code. So this seems to be a logical way of handling the situation.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, would anyone you like to make a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 16-2021 on second reading, amending the Littleton City Code Title X, Chapter 12, Amendment Procedure Regarding City Initiative Comprehensive Rezoning Process.
We have a motion in second from Councilmember Renicki. Counsel, are you, any more discussion? If not, ready to vote? All right. There we go.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Counsel, that is the last item on our agenda tonight. The time is 7:42. I will see you all Saturday, and it is, it will be in this room.
Yes. Counsel, this room. We'll have it set up here, basically in a study session format.
Okay. Great. And that is, it starts at 8:30?
It starts at 8:30.
Great.
We'll have a little bit of a continental breakfast, and for council, staff, and a good time will be had by all.
Coffee for citizens? Coffee for citizens, or water for citizens as well?
Sure. We can have some refreshments, a coffee.
Great. I appreciate that. Okay. Great. Again, it is 7:42, and we are adjourned. Thank you.